You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the April 5th, 2023 meeting of the LaPorte County Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaporte county.org.
Good morning, everyone. We're going to call to order the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners meeting for April 5th, 2023. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Roder, roll call, please.
Commissioner Graham Rosso.
Commissioner Marzinski.
Here.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
You have a present.
Commissioner Marzinski, you're claiming a medical exemption again?
I sure am.
Okay. All right, very good. Next, we have Consider Our Agenda for this morning.
Okay, we need to remove the H FEMA plan, I LOVES, L NIPSCO, and N the Wagner Estates plan. So I'd like a motion to... That's my motion.
Second your motion.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to remove those four items from the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I apologize. Roll call, Mr. Roder, sorry.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Marzinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham Rosso?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Considered the Approval of the March 16th minute.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion, second to approve. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, roll call, please.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Marzinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham Rosso?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. All right, next, we have a consideration of claims. Mr. Roder, please.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. We have payroll for the period ending 3/17/2023 in the amount of $1,453,927.38. And then we have operating expense claims in the amount of $5,335,471.60.
Thank you.
I have a question on the operating expenses. Is Mr. Stevens there or on Zoom?
He's not here in the room, no.
Is he on Zoom?
I cannot see the full list from here.
I wanted to know about the purchase of a piece of equipment for $48,000. I didn't see it listed on the claims. I did see a list where you could buy the same identical piece of equipment for $28,000. I want to know, first of all, I don't remember it ever coming across the agenda for the Commissioners for permission to buy that, and also never been across the Council for permission to pay for it. And why do we have a difference of $20,000 for the same piece of equipment? That's a little troubling to me. But I don't see it on our expenses, so I know it's been delivered. It's sitting at the Highway Department. I'd like to have a little explanation of what the heck's going on with that. It's taxpayer dollars.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Marzinski. Since I don't see him here today, I suggest putting out an email and sending it to him. I know that earlier this year, we approved a couple of different equipment purchases for him, and the Council's funded some of those. I'm not exactly familiar with the piece of equipment you're mentioning off the top of my head, but I know there was some approval by this Board for different pieces of equipment and some funding that's been done so far this year.
Well, yeah.
I don't know how long it's taken for it.
For equipment and trucks, but that was it. There was never anything specific for the big AKM 8,000T four-ton asphalt hot box. Never came across, never come to us.
Mr. Marzinski, I'm aware of it as well. And I did request charity to send me the documentation. Apparently, they're saying that if the equipment is under $50,000, they can purchase it without approval. And I don't know whether this is true or not. I did ask yesterday. I haven't received anything from charity on that. So as soon as I get that documentation, I'll forward it to you. And then as far as the price difference, I didn't know that there was that much of a gap, but...
No, and I've never heard of that either. In my 15 years of service at the county, I've never heard of that. I don't know if our attorney has any information on that?
This has never been brought to my attention.
Thank you.
Oh, I would just say, as...
Sure, yeah.
I don't have it in front of me, but I believe there's cutoffs of 50,150. You know, you got to go to bid. If it's over 150, you got to get close to a certain level. I think 50 is a magic number, but I don't have it in front of me right now.
Appreciate that. Do we...
So is that in the claim?
I don't know. I mean, he's just hitting us with this now. We have to go through and look through the whole claims document. It could have been last Commissioner meeting. It could be this Commissioner meeting.
It was neither one. I've been through them.
Oh, okay.
I was looking for it specifically, and it's not there. And I want an answer on that from the Highway Department. I will send him an email and ask for an answer. In the meantime, yeah, there's a lot of unanswered questions here. You know, IT or maintenance or any other department, when they want to buy something, even when it's less than $50,000, I'm sure Darlene can answer that, they always come to the Commissioner first, get permission to go to the Council to get it paid for. They came to us for this for $48,000, and it's upsetting to find the same identical piece of equipment listed on Hoosier Equipment for $20,000 less. I'd like to know what the heck's going on with that. It doesn't pass the smell test, boys, at all, ma'am.
Commissioner Marzinski, I really wish you would have brought this to our attention earlier, so we could have had our Highway Superintendent here and prepared to answer that question. We'll see if that was one of the backordered pieces of equipment that we approved last year that was delivered this year, or if it's a recent acquisition that just showed up, that just showed up, or if it was backward. You know, we have pieces of equipment that have been backordered for six, seven, eight, nine months that are just coming in. So we'll have to take a look at that, and we appreciate your comments. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, we have a... Did we have a motion? Did we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion, second. Roll call, please, Mr. Roder.
Commissioner Graham Rosso.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham Rosso, Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Marzinski?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Next, public comment. Is there anyone here for a public comment?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Childress. I'm with Family Advocates. We work with a lot of youth in a variety of manners, and one of them is dealing with children who are abused and neglected. And April is the child abuse prevention month, so we're asking the Commissioners to support us by hanging this bow, and we've got pins for you as well. Can I bring that forward to you?
Absolutely.
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you. Yes. Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, Rick Kentav, 324 Box Street, LaPorte, Indiana. I have two issues to discuss with you today. I see that Integris Corporation has advertised what appears to be the HR Director for LaPorte County. And it looks like the requirements have dropped from what our current interim HR Director has. Looks like they're looking for someone with a bachelor's degree, when the current interim director has a master's degree. And I'm trying to figure out why we would lower our hiring standards when the current interim director has higher standards. And we're paying $17,000 to look for a lower qualified candidate. And you were talking about raising the salary pretty much substantially to get a lower qualified candidate. And again, that seems to be a waste of taxpayers' dollars. And I'm trying to figure out, we're going to spend $17,000 for a company to hire a lower qualified candidate, just like we spent $100,000 for an economic development person that doesn't live in the county. We can't fix a roof out here that's leaking. So to me, it sounds like someone's not doing the best things for the county. The next thing I have is I have two ARPA requests I need to serve upon the Commission today.
I'll take this.
Oh, okay, yeah, of course.
Sorry.
That's great, that's great, of course.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones.
Yeah. Speed things up, Mr. Kentav. You feel free to just hand all those to our attorney. Thank you.
I'll hand them to you.
Thank you.
I also have one here for Mr. Marzinski. I have to read the scan in and get it doing electronically. There you go, man. This is the second one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. These two ARPA requests are for you, Mr. Haney, and Mr. Stables requesting emails and text messages. And I'm serving it to you in person to go on record, and I'm sure Mr. Jones understands what the statute on this is.
I do. It's APRA.
Yes, I'm sorry, APRA, all right. And if you guys want to play legal games, I'm prepared to go to the Public Access Counselor downstate, and then we can file suit in court to get you guys to comply. I'm tired of some of the games that are going on, so let's just make sure we understand this is just the first two of many to follow suit after this. So the county, you guys want to do your games, then we can file as taxpayers the same thing that you guys want to play. So we're ready. Have a good day.
Thank you. Can I be heard briefly?
Sure.
Mr. Kentav, at the first Commission meeting of the year, I gave you my business card with my email address. If you have any questions about this process throughout it, you can feel free to contact me anytime. I don't have one on me, but you can feel free to contact me about this anytime. We'll start working on this, okay?
You've got 24 hours to respond. I mean, you've got my email.
I have 24 hours to acknowledge your request. I don't have 24 hours to fulfill your request.
I understand that, but you've got my email on there, so if you...
I do. That sounds perfect. Thank you very much.
Hello.
Good morning.
I'm Phyllis Marx, 118 Sagamore Parkway at LaPorte. Bear with me with my phone, or my voice.
Take your time.
I'm here to talk about the barn out of Canhome. I'm one of the many people that helped restore it. And I don't know how many calls I have gotten about the fence. I guess someone went down and hit the white fence, and it hasn't been repaired. Now, who's the head of the maintenance? Who takes care of that? The Highway Department? County Highway Department? Or who'll take care of fixing the fence? Some of the boards are in back of the barn, as I looked around the barn. But the white fence goes with the barn. And I know many people in the county are excited to see the barn restored, and I know you're one of them. And so the fence, hopefully now, I think they can dig. I don't know if it's frozen down. But who's in charge of taking care of something like that?
It'd be our Facilities Department.
The county planner?
No, Facilities Maintenance.
In the county? Help me understand what you're saying.
The, our County Maintenance Department.
Okay. Well, I have that you will take care of that?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll look into it this afternoon.
So it looks pretty around the barn?
I'll look into it this afternoon. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning. Rodney McCormick, candidate for the First Ward of Michigan City. I just want to say that I've been going over to the courthouse lately here, and even in edicts, I just want to say whoever's doing the work with making sure, painting the courthouse, making it brighter, and making it seem like it's a lot more cleaner than it ever have been, I just want to thank you guys for getting that done. It's a big improvement. The lights are brighter, mics are getting replaced. That's... It's good to see that. Going on to a personnel issue without bringing up no one's name, it's time for us to move forward. Spending $17,000 and whatever is going to end up going into, I just think it's a waste of taxpayers' dollars. If you don't want someone here, just get rid of them. I just don't understand it. Why are we going through all this to just get rid of somebody? If you don't want that person to work here, just don't hold them back either. I'm one of those people that I believe in, everyone can reform. I've done it. And I've done it. I've been one of the hardest persons in the world. And we got people with education, master's degrees, and instead of, it seemed like to me, instead of taking $17,000 to find somebody with less of education and give them opportunity to come in here, and they might make mistakes as well, and do things that's not right. Why not take that $17,000 and invest in training the person that we already have? If that's not your decision, I mean, if that's not what your pleasure is, don't keep hamstringing anyone along. Let's just move on. Because I want to give you guys, you guys have done a lot for me and other people in the city. I've never sat on the County Council, I mean, County Board, and I had the opportunity through the Republican Party and through you guys. It's been other people that didn't want to see me there, but it's still, you guys entrusted me. A lot of us, we want to learn, and we want to be better. We want to be better citizens. I'm just so encouraged with the things I've been seeing, and I'm being, the infighting and other stuff is discouraging. On another note, Michigan City, you guys, your boundaries run through Michigan City. Crime is out, violent crimes with minors is out of control. Our leadership in our city seems like it doesn't exist. Our Council has tried to pass, get a FLOC system, which I don't think is going to work to do. I don't think it's going to help do anything. We are undermanned, we are outgunned, and we just don't have the staff. I hope that somehow, the mayor of Michigan City will reach out to the Sheriff Department, the state police, and you guys need to take an interest in what's going on in Michigan City. Crime is out of control. We have a man that comes back to run for mayor, who has disrespected the Police Department. People in Michigan City and LaPorte County, it's time to quit looking at voting straight ticket. We sit around and look. Michigan City's been Democrat, 55 years Democrat. I've been a Democrat, loyal Democrat for over 40 years, and things have gotten worse in Michigan City. And the nation don't mean nothing to me. I live in Michigan City. That straight party ticket of done, and it's no longer punch 10. When you vote straight, you let other people get in that shouldn't be in the office. But right now, we need your help. You can't keep ignoring Michigan City. We need help. The violent crimes, the shootings, is out of control. So I see the Sheriff's back there, and Mr. Heig, Andy, we need you back on the streets over there, but I know you got a better paying job, but don't give up on us. The crime is out of control, man. And we need help. And I hope that you guys look into it and try to help us out the best you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we have someone on Zoom?
Hi, my name is Sherry Bannock. I live at 4551 South 75 West here in LaPorte. I just have a couple of things that I'd like to address and make known to the public, as well as the Commissioners. Obviously, I've been before the Board several times regarding Meadowview no-ock subdivisions drain. Yesterday, I know that you guys are in the process of putting the drain and getting it connected there at the creek. My issue from the beginning of this is transferring the issue of flooding from one neighbor to the next neighbor, which obviously that has already occurred, because it's flooding now at 75 West and 400 South into other people's yards. There's stormwater literally going into the drain system right now. I have a picture of it. I have a video. You can see on my Facebook. This is a picture of stormwater going into the drain right now. And there's a hose going from one of the drains in front of Kingsbury School to the new drain that they just connected the other day, and it is literally outfalling right now into the creek area. That was the issue from the very beginning. This drain was only supposed to have clean subsurface water, not stormwater. So how are you guys going to fix this situation? And why are you putting stormwater in a drain that has not been approved through IDON? I was also informed that it's possible that the valve is currently open, which, not sure why, when Mr. Sullivan said it wasn't open just the other day. So is that what is contributing to the neighbors on 400 South and 75 West from flooding? Once again, shifting the flooding from one neighbor to the other. And the other issue I have is, why did someone not have to come before the Board to get additional funding to do the road? They milled up the road to put the drain in, and the original plan was to go down the right-of-way, which is an additional expense that I'm sure is absolutely probably over $50,000. Like Rich said, I think you had to come before the Board, or someone said that. This is just ridiculous, that we are spending so much of our tax dollars on a private subdivision to accommodate possibly six houses, when currently now, we have the Kramers, the Watkins, and the Gothos flooded. Their lands are flooded. They're transferring the issue from one neighbor to the other. And I think, from what I understand, it's called common enemy rule, that we're not supposed to be doing that. But I want to know who's going to be overseeing this valve once it's in full bloom. Do you guys have a resolution? Is it the surveyor that's going to be in charge of this? Is it the drainage board that's going to be in charge of this? Because if the neighbor south of the creek, once this valve is completely open, if we start flooding, who's going to be in charge of shutting that valve so that we don't flood? Thank you.
Thank you.
May I pass this out, please?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
My name is Dean White, and I reside at 3066 North US Highway 35 at the old Pine Lake Range Farmers. I have been a longtime advocate for tourism as a past Board Manager of the LaPorte County Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I am trying to promote for many, many years now, a, what we would call a Vista View. It is on the corner of Pine Lake Avenue and Waverly. There's a sign there that says Soldiers Memorial Park and an arrow directing to Cummings Lodge. Well, it is well overgrowthed with just scrub tree, not really trees, but...
Brushing.
Brushing, yes, okay, thank you. And I'm giving you a picture of how it once looked when it was cleared. And I'm sure our past soldiers in memory would appreciate us bringing that back to view. It's on a curve on Pine Lake Avenue. When people are heading south on the road, and it's an obvious beautiful view of our Stone Lake in the background. And now is the time to do something about it. If you have a chance to go by there soon and take a look before the leaves start growing on the scrub brush and that, so you can really get a viewpoint of it. And it would be easier to clear that at this time as well. Most of that property is owned by the county. There's a small portion right along the curb that's owned by the state, and the city owns a small portion by the fireworks. And it's, I've already addressed the city council, and they all seem quite happy about the idea as well. But there was many years ago, I did address the County Commissioners here, and they were all for it. They even offered some help with some sheriff inmates to help with the clearing. And there are a number of people that would help volunteer as well. But it's, like I say, it's, there's an urgency at this time. So I appreciate you looking into that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? I don't see anyone here in person, anyone on Zoom left for public comment? All right, well, then at this time, we're going to close public comment and move on to Department head comments, please.
Good morning. The later Health Department, good morning. I just want to let everybody know that we, as you know, our water lab here in LaPorte is closed due to the flood and will not be open for quite some time. We were able to enter into an agreement with YES Laboratories out of Mishawaka, so we will be able to still provide services to our county residents. We are accepting samples in the Michigan City, temporary Michigan City office on 8th Street, 302 West 8th Street. On Mondays and Wednesdays from 8:00 AM until 3:30, we'll be able to take both bacteria and chemical analysis that we normally do, and at our same prices, which was huge for us to be able to broker those prices. So just wanted to share that.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Good information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President. Commissioner Sean Fitzpatrick, Director of Facilities. Just want to give you an update of what we've gotten done in this past month since we were here last. Well, we had an electrical issue in the jail. We were able to have Marcus Electra come out, and we were able to pull 17 new wires and a conduit that was embedded in concrete to get the power restored to the area. In our lift station here in the complex boiler room, we had to replace a lift station. One of the pumps was replaced. It was something that we already had in stock, so there was no additional cost other than the man-hours it took to replace that. And we did have Johnson &amp; John's come out and pump the station out. So we've been trying to keep the smell down in the halls when you walk in here. So that's a big part of that. JSC, the boilers that we were able to order, we got those installed, and it's up and running, and everything is fine over there. And the same thing with community corrections. We have the new boilers in stock, and the prep work is almost complete to begin the installation of those. So we still have the one that's kind of limping along, but we'll be replacing it shortly, probably before the holiday. So that'll be up and running over there. And I think Mr. McCormick commented we've been working on the painting in the courthouse. That's almost completed. So we have a couple more projects. We want to replace some of the ceiling tiles and give it just a fresh look in there. So when you walk in, visitors come from outside of our county, whatever, they know that, you know, we're open for business and we're professional. I have found an issue with our elevator in the higher building, the internal components and all of the operational equipment of it is outdated. There's no way to incorporate any new equipment into it, so it's going to have to be overhauled at some point. So we're in the process of getting quotes for that. So I have an update for that as soon as I get it, because if it goes down, we'll be out of an elevator in that facility, and that's the only way to be in ADA compliance to access the second floor. So once I do get those quotes in, I'll be approaching you to get permission to approach the Council for funding for that. In our jail south elevator, we had two instances where individuals were trapped in the elevators. We had Otis come out and fix it once, and then they came out and did it again. And I think we're good on that one for now, so hopefully we don't have any issues with that. We did have the clock serviced. Just FYI, from my information, I found out the clock was built in 1802. So, and we're one of the only counties or areas that have a functioning clock, as well as the bell that both work. So as you leave, they'll have the bell and no clock, or the clock and then a simulated bell, but we actually have both in there up and running. So as you leave, they'll have the bell and no clock or the clock and then a simulated bell, but we actually have both in there up and running. And um scheduled, the scheduled maintenance is, is continuing, so we'll be having it for some time. Um, we did have a is, uh issue at Community Corrections where someone was able to uh escape custody. We are in the process of resecuring those areas and making tamper proof equipment in place so that in an attempt to prevent any further such instances. So that's something else we're going to be looking to get additional funding for once we get the uh appropriate measures to take care of that. Uh, we did have to, our courthouse, we had to, the Laporte courthouse, we had to replace uh one of the compressors for the L G units. So uh I do have one on order, so that we, we keep one in stock and we're looking to have the, the entire system inspected. So we'll be on top of any other issues that may arise before we go back into our next winter season. So that's something else we're getting uh taken care of right now. Uh, we have about six new part-time employees with maintenance. I'm looking to beef up our, our part-time cleaning staff and, and start a evening crew because um currently we have, well, when I started, we had five housekeeping, two, two full-time and three part-time housekeepers to clean three hundred and eighty thousand square feet of office space. So it's really not humanly possible to do that. So we're uh in the process of getting the staff in to accommodate our, our cleaning needs for, so all of our facilities are, are maintained and, and cleaned uh daily. Uh, we were able to close out six hundred and eighty-four work orders for the month of uh March. And thirty-four of those work orders were for paper delivery. So we uh actually delivered sixty-seven cases of paper this month. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick, um want to thank you and your staff for the, the hard work you've been doing. As well, the courthouse looks great. I know Commissioner Graham Rosa worked hand in hand with you to, for, on some of that, so appreciate that. If you wouldn't mind, while you're up, if you might take a look at uh addressing that fence issue out there by the barn and see.
Oh yeah, I meant to uh address that. I was gonna give um this, this young lady my card so we could be on top of that. Uh, a lot of those things I am aware of, but we were waiting for the season to change. It was uh the winter months and we still were dealing with snow and stuff. So we're going around and addressing, working with F M E C, dealing with all of the uh perimeter, the, the uh fairgrounds area, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Uh, Rob Savvy with the Laporte County E M A. I just wanted to give an update a little bit on last Friday's storm. Uh, we did have a few structures that got damaged um during that wind event on Friday evening. Um, uh, there was a little bit of hail damage also on the first round that went through. Uh, we spent two days out yesterday and uh Monday going through, looking at the damage reports that we did get. If uh there is anybody that had any structural damage, um if they could get on the county website and just email us so that we know where it's at, we can come out and take a look at it, make uh take some pictures or whatever. Um, that way we can send it to the state. They keep track of all that. Um, we fared fairly well compared to some of our western counties. I know Mariville got hit with a F one tornado. They've got several homes that were destroyed, um and several with major damage. And uh we lucked out. It didn't make it this, that far over here. But uh today we did get some reports of, we had several rounds of the storms that went through. We had some tr- more trees down. So I know the county highway's been out cleaning that up. Um, uh, on that note, uh with alerting, um we do, the county provides through, it's called Smart nine one one. Um, you can sign up, you don't have to have it on your phone, but there is an app you can download. It goes on your smart, smartphone. And anytime there's, you can sign up for weather alerts, road closings, whatever. There's a bunch of different options on there. Um, I would recommend that anybody that has a smartphone, or you don't even have to have a smartphone. There is an option on there that it will call your home phone and, you know, give you a, a voice message that says that there's, you know, a warning or a watch. So um I know the other night when the, we had the tornado went out, the weather service sends that out and it, it goes through the, uh, it's called WEA. And that's the weather alerting and it lights up everybody's phone that's in that area. So um then that would give you a, a good heads up, a warning. You know, the sirens did go off also, so that's, you know, kind of a backup. But I recommend everybody have at least have it on your phone or, or sign up for that. So that way you would get a, you know, a warning is when it comes out. That um, so if any questions, you can go to the website. There is a link on there to sign up. Or if you need, you know, you can call our office and we can help you walk, walk you through it. So, I mean, some people don't have cell phones, so it's still, you know, call a home phone and leave a message. Or, you know, if you answer the phone, it will tell you what's going on. We were supposed to be on the agenda for a mitigation uh plan. Um, I just found out this morning, I wanted to give you an update on that, that it is in for their internal eh review. So as soon as they get done with their internal review, we will have it in our hands. And we'll put it on the uh agenda for the next meeting. So that way they'll have, we'll have time to go through it and the attorney can look at it and we'll have time for a public review. We'll put a, a link on our website and then they can look at it and see if there's any changes or anything that needs to be done to it. Um, other than that, I don't have anything else. If any questions or.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it. Thanks for saying that FEMA uh plan through. Have any, uh, any other department heads? Any department heads on Zoom? All right, hearing done, we're going to move on to um requests. I don't see any requests or old business here today. Um, for new business, we have a consider our Laporte County Sheriff's Department twenty twenty-three contract. Sheriff Heek.
Good morning, Commissioners Ron Heek, Sheriff. Uh, before we get into this, I just want to touch on a department head report. I didn't want to come up just to sit back down, just to come right back up.
Sure.
Approximately two weeks ago, we had our annual jail inspection that was uh done by the Department, Indiana Department of Corrections. I received a preliminary draft on that report and we've received an excellent rating. And that is a testament to the, the dedicated men and women that work back there within our jail. Uh, we should be receiving a, the final draft within the next week or two. And once I get that, I'll be glad to forward it on to your guys' um uh for your review as well. Uh, the first item I come to you with this morning is an agreement um uh for the sheriff's office legal deputy. This is kind of a housekeeping item that this has been something that all the former sheriffs that I've worked for has had this. Uh, this has gone through the county attorney who has approved this request and we asked for your signature this morning, President.
Certainly, yeah. Entertain a motion to uh adopt the contract.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Um, any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Auditor.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosinski.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. The next uh topic I come here this morning with is I'm uh seeking your permission to approach the council. Uh, Laporte County was part of a class action lawsuit in which um the pharmaceutical industry was sued. Uh, we received and we're going to receive about one point two million dollars over, I believe, the next five years. We received our initial payment from this settlement in the amount of two hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. Uh, and the parameters regarding this money, it's kind of like the A R P money. It's been given to the commissioners. Uh, we ask for your permission to approach the council or receive an appropriation. Uh, part of that money is, can be spent on drug equipment testing, training, so on and so forth. Uh, what we would like to purchase is a true narc narcotics analyzer. It allows our deputies to test uh drugs without actually test the um, the, without actually having to touch the drug itself. Uh, this is very helpful, especially when we're dealing with narcotics such as fentanyl. It can be very deadly. I asked for your permission this morning to approach the council for uh funding on that.
Second.
All right, all right. We have a motion in a second to approve. Any further discussion? There you go. Mr. Auditor?
Commissioner Rosinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Okay, another one in, just one. Thank you. All right, thank you. Uh, next we have a consider on-call agreement, uh with Ethica Corporation, uh not to exceed sixty thousand dollars over two years. And permission to approach the uh council for their approval, uh Mr. Sullivan, our county engineer.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Yeah, I'm here to uh, I guess, request permission before, before the council for a not on-call agreement with Etica um for sixty thousand dollars. Uh, we have, uh, in the past, we've had a number of on-call agreements with different engineering firms. Um, I try to use them very sparingly uh when something comes up that I may need, you know, we, you may need to look at, just kind of second set of eyes for things. So just here for consideration of that.
I appreciate that. This is uh, it appears to be substantially similar to previous ones. In addition to that, in a time when inflation continues to go up, you actually managed to uh bring us uh, bring us an agreement here that's lower than our cur- than the previous uh one for a former group, right?
Yes, we've had uh three on-calls that, since I've been here. Well, four, if you include the P A's rating on-call, what we have with Weaver Associates for the highway department. Um, they, they do that. They also, they haven't gone over their amount, their contract, every two-year contract with them. Um, we've had three others, U S I for a hundred and fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand, and we had one with Lockmueller for, or Lockner, excuse me. And that was for a hundred and fifty thousand too, I believe.
Thank you. You've reviewed this, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I have a question. Um, this is the same company that came in March to do a contract with us to analyze the uh courthouse?
I, I believe so, yes. They had a presentation on that.
Okay, so when we hired uh U S I and then Lockmueller, we actually had projects for them, right? Cause U S I was working on highway.
Uh, the U S I, Lockner, we didn't necessarily have a project for them. That was just in case we needed something for them to do. U S I, yes. Uh, U S I has our bridge inspection contract. They've had that for uh be, well, about twelve, be twelve years total now, when, when this next contract is fulfilled. And when bridge things come up, I do ask their expertise and get their knowledge for us. That's their on-call. We also had them do some on-call inspections for us. Um, they did the community crossings grants for the last three or four years as, as part of that on-call agreement. And um, they, like I said, they do also then, uh, you know, we had this big uh, it's a hundred and ninety-two thousand pound transformer that went over our bridges. And we had them look at the, do some calculations for us just to make sure that they were comfortable with it. I don't want to take liability for something that, you know, that extreme, so.
So when we set the hundred and fifty thousand dollar for that company, it was because we knew that there were projects coming up. So currently with uh bringing on this new company as an on-call agreement, do you have set projects for them?
I do not at this time, no.
So then why are we going to set aside sixty thousand dollars when I know that in the past, we usually, if we bring on a new company, we set aside two thousand, three thousand dollars, under five thousand dollars. Why are we going to set aside so much money for this?
I, I don't have an answer for that. Just, it's a two-year contract. It's on-call. If we need them, we have them. But I mean, like I said, I try to use it as sparingly as possible.
Never have in the past, no.
Well, it's never how we came to select this company. Uh, this, your question?
They came in with a lower price than the, than the current, uh, than the current group. And that there's still, there's still funding left on that. And this, this is, it's not like if we don't use it, we're not going to loot. We're, we don't spend anything, but it does lock in these lower reduced prices for the next two years if we decide to use it. And if we don't use them, we can still, there's still a little bit of, there's like twenty thousand dollars left on the uh U S I contract, if I remember correctly. So we can still use U S I as well. It's not exclusive, but it does lock in our guarantee to have an on-call engineer for the next two years that'll reduce rates.
Yeah, the. Yes.
Yeah, and it's not exclusive either. And there was crossover before with Lockner and, and the other group as well.
But again, we don't have a set pri- we don't have a set project. So what, how are we locking in a lower price? What are we locking a lower price in if we have no projects?
No, I, uh, thank you. Um, so, and, and on-call agreement is for things that come up on an as-needed basis on-call. So it, it's, it's hard to anticipate, you know, what, what projects may like, for example, uh, Mr. Sullivan just mentioned when that uh large transformer went over the bridge and you needed to bring in a, in, in a group to take a look at that. Um, to make sure that the bridge would be able to rate it for it and they're comfortable for it and they take that liability to say yes or no. So we, we don't know if there's another transformer coming next week or next year, or that's just one example. For example, I know Sullivan mentioned he is going to need an extra set of eyes of the project up on Johnson Road and four hundred. Um, I recall here in that, uh, in the past as well. So it's, it's the same thing when we, you know, when the commissioners approved in the past, Commissioner Rosinski, remember, past couple of years, we approved uh you, you know, U S I's portion. We didn't have necessarily projects set aside for the one fifty for that.
Well, yeah, and we, we approved a contract, which we still have in, in force with U S I, compared to that with Lockner. Um, a point that was brought to me was Lockner and U S I have offices in where this new company, Etica, is out of Porter County?
I believe, I, I believe so. And um Porter and South Bend, if I remember correctly, yes. They have offices, offices around the state. I know that. And they do a tremendous amount of work here, for example, on double track.
So the U S I has an office, but they also have an office in Laporte. Uh, U S I way across the street and Lockner out on Johnson Road. Which I thought was uh committed with, with uh the data that we had with cell phones, that they were right there readily available. Uh, which we thought to me, why would we, why would we uh not continue doing businesses? Business with companies who are located right across the street or right down the road uh and go to Porter County? Uh, I have no answer for that, but.
Yeah, well, per- perhaps it would, uh, perhaps approval of this would encourage, uh, you know, other companies such as U S I to sharpen their pencils and come back to the table with more, uh, with lower, uh, with lower pricing moving forward. May set a good example moving forward, trying to save the taxpayers some, some money.
But again, if we don't have a project set, how do we know we're saving money? What are we saving money on?
It's an at, it's, it's for on-call work and they're offering us guaranteed rates for on-call.
Two-year, two-year guaranteed rates for on-call services.
Right, so we, we don't know if we'll call them once or a hundred times, but we know that if this contract is approved and there's a call six months, ten months, fourteen months from now, it'll be at this locked-in lower rate. That, that's my understanding of the agreement.
So do you have the rate for what U S I charges us and now what they're going to charge us per hour?
They, they charge per hour per job depending on what we ask them to do. Um, inspection work is one charge. They, they've had a list on the, on their scope of uh, of charges. What, what each item would be for.
But you can't tell us what the savings is per hour?
I, I can't right now because I don't have both the, their proposal and the old proposal to compare side by side to let you know, you know, what the differences are.
So we're still on the contract with U S I and have twenty thousand dollars. And so now we want to commit another sixty thousand on top of that. So now we would have eighty thousand dollars for on-call.
Which is seventy thousand less than the last one that was approved. Correct.
It, it doesn't make sense to me if we still have a contract and still have twenty thousand dollars to spend. Why would we allow in contract for another sixty thousand, you know?
Because it's ninety thousand less than the one fifty at a cheaper rate per hour?
But you can't tell us what that hourly rate is.
Sure it is. Uh, Exhibit B in our packets here has the hourly, has the hourly rates here that was in the contract that went out.
And we currently have no projects going.
I, I don't have any projects currently that I would need on-call for them to do, no. I, I, you know, they did, uh, I don't know, about three months ago, they approached me. And at that time, I was working on the design for the fairgrounds uh restrooms and I noticed in their packet that they had some experience with building. And uh that's when uh Mr. Haney and, and I got together and I said that he'd asked if I might have a uh, you know, a reason for that. I said, well, I said, it looks like, I said, they got some experience. And I said, yeah, I said, I'd like to have second set of eyes on the, you know, on the um, the fairgrounds restroom. But that's been, uh, the fairgrounds restroom design has been sent to the state. But that's been, the fairgrounds restroom design has been sent to the state. I'm just waiting on the permit for that. So that's, other than that, no. At this time, I don't have anything for them, no.
I'd like to have a discussion.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
I'm trying to see where, I'm trying to look in this packet real quick. Just give me two more minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I have it right here. You know what? I'll, I'll second the motion because I, we shouldn't have to do this in a meeting. This should be done before a meeting. I'll second that motion.
All right, very good. We have a motion, a second, a table. Any further discussion? Right here, no. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brzezinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. All right, next.
Thank you. Is there any other questions on any of the stuff we got going on right now? I noticed some meta view or other things that we want to?
I, I think we're all right for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have, consider retirement pay for Vicki. You worked 66 days and two weeks vacation, Mr. Mrs. Stevens, County Clerk.
Morning.
Morning.
Vicki has retired after 32 years with the clerk's office. So we owe, we, I believe she had 66 days left and two weeks vacation. So I just need to, I need to pay her for that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brzezinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
And if you would just congratulate her and thank her for all her hard work.
We absolutely, we brought in a cake on Friday and we, she got a, a very nice plaque and it was a good day, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Next we have, continue, consider annual service agreement for the purchase of a Tech 84 Intercept Whole Body Scanner. Ms. America Beatty, Community Corrections.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our scanner annual agreement is due. I would like to acknowledge that it is $495 more than it was last year. So I would need to ask for permission to go to the council for the $495.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve the service agreement and to approach the council for funding. Any further discussion? Mr. Roder, roll call, please.
Commissioner Grammerosa?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brzezinski?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. All right, next we have, consider proposed amendment to the SRI contract with the county.
May I address that from my, my perch here?
Yes, please.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Treasurer Winsky and I have reviewed and I believe the county attorney can speak to this as well. SRI, who has done our, our tax sales for a long time, has, after several years, sought to simply update the fee it passes through to $125 from 100. I don't believe there's any other significant changes, but I think the attorney can comment on his review process.
I had no comments or concerns beyond what I'd already addressed with the auditor previously about this, I think. I'm not sure if I had any comments beyond that. Thank you. All right, very good.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the proposed amendment with the SRI contract. Any further discussion? Right here, no. Mr. Roder, roll call, please.
Commissioner Grammerosa?
Aye.
Commissioner Brzezinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Three ayes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have, consider permission for the, for use of the Laporte County Courthouse lawn for the 11th Annual Prevent Child Abuse Awareness Walk.
Motion to approve?
I approve use of the sidewalk. Uh, in the years past, we have never allowed people to sit up on the lawn due to a bad experience we had somewhere over there, but the lawn got destroyed. Uh, that lawn belongs to the tax makers and we spent a lot of money to keep it the way that we do. We have minimal signs for the use of the sidewalk, but never the lawn itself.
Fair, well, thank you. Well, we, we, we have a young lady here from, from the group here. If you, what, if you wouldn't mind telling us what, what exactly you were planning on putting on the lawn?
Sure.
And I assume it was the crowd would be on the sidewalk and maybe just a little setup for, you know, one or two staff members and your, your display, but please go ahead.
Sure. If you don't mind, I'll read what I had started or had prepared and then I'll go on to address the questions that were mentioned. Good morning Commissioners and others. My name is Megan Yan and I'm the Children's Minister at First Shine Methodist Church here in Laporte. April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, also known as Child Abuse Awareness Month, as it was declared in 1979 by President Jimmy Carter. Each year, FUMC holds the Blue Walk to bring awareness to this in our community. Were you aware that annually, 6 million children were reported abused and most victims of abuse and neglect are 18 months and younger? That's too many. Too many children that are not able to live without fear of what might happen. April is meant to help spread awareness to the importance of families and communities working together to prevent child abuse and neglect so all children can have a happy childhood without fear. Our Blue Walk is just one example in which the group is trying to spread awareness. During the Blue Walk, which you were sent a flyer of yesterday, it starts at our church on Michigan Avenue and then we walk to the courthouse on the southwest corner of the lawn. We gather as two to three speakers typically then speak on the topic of child abuse, as well as the mayor reading the proclamation. Afterwards, we walk back down Monroe Street to the church where we have a meal and enjoy fellowship with one another. In the year of 2021, the Indiana Department of Child Services was called to investigate 271 child fatalities in which abuse and neglect were suspected to be the factor. Of those fatalities, 22 were of abuse and 38 were due to neglect. One, one of those fatalities was from Laporte County. In my opinion, that's one from our community gone too soon due to abuse, as the report indicated. Though all of those fatalities of children were gone too soon, gone to an abuse or neglect, the Blue Walk is a simple way to bring awareness or by wearing a blue ribbon, which is one of the symbols of child abuse awareness. A simple blue ribbon became a symbol roughly 34 years ago. In the spring of 1989, a grandmother named Bonnie Finney took the stand against child abuse in Norfolk, Virginia. She tied a simple blue ribbon to the antenna of her minivan to stand against child abuse in remembrance of her late grandson as a signal to her community that child abuse was a devastating social plague. Her grandson, Michael Wayne Bubba Dickinson, and his siblings had lived in an at-risk abusive home environment. Despite Finney's efforts to intervene on behalf of her grandchildren, the boyfriend of the children's mother murdered three-year-old Bubba. His body was found beaten, bound, bruised, and a weighted toolbox at the bottom of a canal. Finney said she was thinking of all the bruises that she had seen on her grandchildren as she tied the blue ribbon on the van. She said she intended to never forget the battered, bruised bodies of her grandchildren and she used the colored blue as that reminder to fight for the protection of grandchildren and of children in general. With your permission, we'd like to continue the tradition of the 11th Annual Blue Walk to be able to gather on the courthouse lawn on Thursday, April 27th at 6:00 PM. We provide our own electric and our portable PA system. We only need access to electricity to plug in our system. If possible, we'd also like to be able to have our sign displayed on the corner of Indiana and Lincoln Way for the remainder of the month as well. Thank you for your time and your consideration. To address the lawn question, we have, as long as I've partaken and it stood on the lawn, I was never aware that there was a problem with standing on the lawn. If that is a concern, we can address that and figure out a way to make both parties happy. I'll be happy to configure and address that so that we can still meet in a public area to continue to raise awareness and as long as keeping, you know, everyone happy with that, if that is a problem. But.
Sure. So I can say with clarity that last year and the year before, I participated in the walks. We met at the church and then we walked over to the lawn. It was done, you know, it was set up right behind the sign and there were no problems. I don't know how far back that there may have been problems with perhaps other groups, but I can honestly say that I participated and it's been a very nice event. A lot of people come out. It's never more than 50, but it, it's a nice group.
I think our largest year, we had roughly 80.
Right. So, I mean, I would like to continue to do it on the lawn, but obviously it has to be an agreement amongst all of us.
I, I think given the nature and the history of this, and there's been no issue, I, I wouldn't, I, I personally wouldn't have an issue with continuing the same, the same, same pattern that you've done in the past, so.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, I do have flyers, if you don't mind if I approach, and I did bring some pins. The other symbol is a pinwheel to represent the joyfulness of a childhood and such. So I do have some pinwheel pins and I also have some blue ribbon pins, if you don't mind if I approach and.
Please, thank you.
I can hand you those as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So.
As far as the sign on the courthouse lawn there, if they were to take that to the Commissioner's office, that's the way we've done that sign for seven years at least, take it to the Commissioner's office and we'll have maintenance put it up. And after what Mr. Grammerosa had stated here, I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to, to approve the request. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, roll call, please.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa?
Aye.
Commissioner Brzezinski?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, next we have, H and I have been removed. Next we have item J, consider a request to close small road from Orchard Avenue to Forester Road for the Laporte County 43rd Annual Sprint Triathlon. Nick Knorski. This is the, I believe he was going to have a bit of an issue here this morning. I told him he didn't necessarily need to show up if he wasn't able to. This is.
I participated in this event myself for many years. I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brzezinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank, thank you.
The Sheriff's Department has been involved in making sure that that is safe over the years. I'm sure we'll have no problem with it.
Very good. Thank you. All right, next we have, consider sick days and one month in church extension for retiring employee, Ms. Eric Stallworth, Community Corrections.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's actually juvenile services.
Or juvenile services, I apologize.
This is very bittersweet for me. After 22 and a half years, I'll be transitioning into a different position within the court system. So I'm requesting retirement pay for my sick days and then I'm also requesting an extension. So the county will still cover some of my salary. However, there's going to be a gap in the benefits between my last day, which will be April 20th, and then my first, the day I get benefits will be May 14th. So there will be a gap in benefits. As I was requesting, I could, you know, pay the premiums. I know other employees with different situations have had to do that in the past. So I was just requesting permission for that to happen for me as well, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Congratulations on, on both your retirement and your new, new position.
Thank you so much. Good luck. Thank you very much.
You're gonna, you're gonna do great.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's very bittersweet.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Grammerosa?
Aye.
Commissioner Brzezinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Three ayes.
All right, thank you. Item L was removed. Next we have, consider RFQ for engagement of industrial appraisal firm, Andrew Jones, our attorney.
Good morning Commissioners. You all have heard from me and heard from Michigan Insurance Representative John Jones about the need to engage an industrial appraisal firm regarding equipment and other property within county buildings. It, it is no issue whatsoever for me to prepare an RFQ to, to go out to local firms or, or other firms that would be able to do this job. So I'm just asking for, for Mr. Jones, the other Mr. Jones, his request that we seek an RFQ in this regard to engage an industrial appraisal firm so that these things continue to remain insured. As we can see from what has happened in the last four months, having insurance is vitally important and we want to make sure that we have all the information we need so we can secure insurance in the future. So I'd ask for your permission to prepare an RFQ in this regard.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sorry about that. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Right here, none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brzezinski? Commissioner Grammerosa?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye. Three ayes. Thank you.
I, I can speak to the last issue as well, the, the number, letter O.
Uh, yes, please.
Yep, rather than have an insurance representative speak. There was a damage to a county vehicle, excuse me, to another vehicle in an accident involving a county vehicle. Gallagher Bassett, our third-party administrator of our claims process, has done a great job and has reached a tentative proposal to settle the claim for $6,500 and they advise that we should accept this.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve for the settlement of $7,000 for property damage?
I'm going to reframe.
Yep, she's, I think abstain.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. All right, all right, I'll, I'll, I'll second that motion then. Any further discussion?
Point of order, the agenda says 7,000. I presume it's less than the agenda?
It, it will likely be less than the agenda. I believe it'll be $6,500, but we always seek a not-to-exceed amount.
7,000.
Sure.
7,000.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If I misspoke, the agenda says 7,000 and that's what we're seeking. I apologize if I misspoke. Pretty good. Did, did I not say 7,000?
I, I don't know. I'm sorry. I thought maybe the month.
I think Jones said 65.
Okay, so.
For the problem.
I, I, yeah, I think the issue is this, is when this was agended, Gallagher Bassett was asking for $7,000 of authority. Since then, it appears that the other person involved in the crash is willing to take $6,500. So it was agended at 7,000. It looks like they'll take 6,500. I would still ask for permission to settle the claim at 7,000, just in case there's some sort of li, you know, contingent liability here.
I would rephrase the motion, say not to exceed 7,000.
Okay, and, and I'll second that. Thank you. All right, any further discussion?
Commissioner Haney?
Yes, Mr. Roder. Oh, aye, thank you. You would write it, roll call. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Brzezinski?
Aye.
We, no Commissioner Grammerosa's already.
Yep. Stained, okay. Stained. Yep. All right, thank you. And we've come to the final item on our agenda, consider a letter from the Office of the Attorney General and release of prosecutor's records. On, I have a letter here that was sent to me from the.
That has already been tabled, hasn't, has it not?
The, the, the letter here is a new item of business because this just came, this came in.
But you read those letters at the last Commissioners' meeting?
No, no, not this letter. This is a new letter that has come in. I sent it out to you all within, I don't know, about 12, 18 hours. Yeah, it was, it was sent out on Thursday. This, this letter is dated March 21st, 24th, 2023 and it is addressed to myself, Joe Haney, President of the Laporte County Board of Commissioners. So this is a fresh email that has come out since the last meeting. And I think it's, it's important to, I hope you all, I, I know I sent out an email with some salient points in there and I asked you all to review it. I hope, I hope you have. We'll have this, we'll have this added to the, added to our packet here, or added to the minutes, just the letter and whole, but if it's all right, I'm going to, I'm just going to read the salient points from this, from this email here. I'm just gonna read the salient points from this uh from this email here because it is, it is a demand letter from the in the Office of the Indiana Attorney General. Uh it says um it's, it opens with the uh with them being notified of the dispute, uh to the access to emails of Laporte County Prosecuting Attorney, uh Sean Fagan. And I'll I'll read some quotes here, quote, information crucial crucial, it refers to these uh emails and documents as, quote, information crucial to performing prosecutorial duties. And it goes on to say, quote, the Office of the Attorney General prefers to not take further legal action and demands your compliance in providing access to these records. Um it goes on to say that, quote, access to these records is necessary as a matter of proper governance under Indiana law. And then it cites Indiana Code five dash fifteen dash five point one dash one five A. Uh and then it gives that appropriates uh section of the statute. Goes on to say, quote, records as defined under Indiana Code include email communications. And goes on to say, quote, Prosecutor Fagan is legally entitled to these email records. Uh it goes on to give some court history here, uh both uh Indiana statute as well as um uh case law. And then uh the letter uh continues to say, quote, the fact remains that you and your commissioners continue to be in noncompliance with Indiana law while jeopardizing criminal prosecutions in your county and the efficient flow or continuity of government. They ask for our response within fifteen days there and uh they close with our preference is not to pursue further legal remedies, but we are prepared to take further steps as necessary. The sign sincerely, John Walls, Chief Counsel Advisory of the Indiana Office of the Attorney General. And it's on Todd Rakita's letterhead. I'll open the floor to discussion about this email, ab- about this uh, about this uh letter I was served with from the Indiana Office of Attorney General's Office.
I would just say one thing. I I have um I have the bills and I'm going through them to figure out how much money the county has already spent on our end for representing Fagan on this. Twice, the last meeting, we had a discussion about this and now we're here again and the podium is empty. Mr. Fagan is not coming here to ask anything. We have offered to give him anything relating to any cases that he wants. I actually printed out forty-four open cases. He has not taken me up on my offer. And he has threatened me with obstruction of justice. I will say, like I said at the last meeting, we need to take the next, he needs to take the next step because an empty podium and the fact that you're bringing this up and that we're using valuable money and resources from our our attorney to discuss this, I just think it's ridiculous. I'm done.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Commissioner Brzezinski, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I I have to uh agree that uh Mr. Fagan has had ample opportunity to show up at a commissioner meeting to uh state his case. And also, then Commissioner Graham Rosa has offered him, she's in her office every day, eight hours at least. Offered him to come to the office and sit down and see what they want. She's she's opened up all these cases. Wha- what else does he want? I don't understand it. I don't understand this at all. It's the, wha- what is, what do you want? Um we're offering to give you what you need, but yet you refuse to take it. And instead you want to go this other route. Uh and and I've discovered other information that wouldn't do proper to to bring up at this time, but this whole thing doesn't pass the smell of that. This is, this is ridiculous. Where is the prosecutor?
And I just want to make one correction because I think you slipped and you said, I'm here eight hours a week. I'm actually here eight hours a day.
I'm sorry.
Because I don't want it to show up in the minutes as eight hours a a week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ca- could I be heard briefly on what the law is on this?
Yes, please.
Whether you like Mr. Fagan, don't like Mr. Fagan, whether he shows up at a commission meeting or doesn't show up at a commission meeting, whether he threatened you with obstruction of justice, whether he threatened anyone else of these things, none of that really matters. But these, these things belong to him. Uh they don't belong to him personally. They belong to his office. So the email records that the same, that the, excuse me, Laporte County is holding on to, those belong to his office. The Attorney General's letter that was sent last week makes this very clear and cites Indiana Code as well as case law, showing that the commissioners don't have over any oversight over the prosecutor. The only thing they are required to do by law is provide the resources for his office to operate. The Attorney General has said very, very clearly that these things belong to his office. My suggestion to the commission, so we never have to discuss this again or pay anybody else to worry about this, has been for Mr. Fagan to take the initiative, get his own server for his office, as is done in counties across the state and house all emails related to the Laporte County Prosecutor's Office on his own server. That would guarantee that this issue never comes before the commission again. It would solve this problem now and in perpetuity. So that is what I emailed to you three on Thursday. That is my suggestion as a resolution to all of this. If we're worried about incurring legal expenses rel- related to this, not turning this material over is guaranteeing further legal pro- further legal expenses being incurred by the county. That is, that is my sole perspective on this.
Mr. Jones, has the prosecutor answered you on your uh on your offer?
Uh I believe he suggested it at some point. Uh I would tell you this, Mr. uh Brzezinski. If this commission voted today, as I asked it to be agended on Thursday, to have all of this information transferred to Mister, to a, to a server in the Laporte County Prosecutor's Office. If this commission voted on that today, I would feel very, very confident that we could defend this issue going forward without any reservations. I would first tell the Attorney General that we have complied with their requests. I would tell the Public Access Counselor that this issue is resolved and we could never have to worry about this again. All we would need is the commission to direct our IT to transfer all of this information onto a prosecutor's office server and then we'll never have to worry about it again. So that is what I ask to be agended today, is a vote on that specific issue because it's a final resolution to this morass that we are in.
And again, our attorney is representing the stateholder and the stateholder himself does not have legal counsel.
I do not represent Sean Fagan. I have never represented him. He is represented by the Attorney General.
Who is not present. Neither Fagan nor his attorney is present here to present their case.
They sent us a letter and they don't have to be here. That doesn't change the law.
Okay.
This belongs to the office. That that's, that's why I'm trying to resolve this.
Okay.
So, so w- we are, we, and it's been sent to all of us uh at this point, are in possession of a demand letter that we have to respond to from the Office of the Indiana Attorney General's Office within fifteen days. This can't be postponed until the next meeting. There has to be a vote. However, however, whatever the pleasure of the board is here, there has to be a vote either denying the demand letter from the Attorney General's Office or saying we're gonna comply with it. Um there's, there's no leeway here. It it it's, it is what it is. So if 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 the board chooses to deny the request or deny the demand of the Attorney General's Office, then 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 that's the pleasure of the board. But we need to give this a vote because we have to respond within, well, now within fifteen days, a receipt of the letter. And of course, I sent it to you when when I got it. So here we are at the one and only meeting that we're gonna have uh before this response is due.
This was tabled. And and again, you're bringing it up on another angle. You've called them up. You've had them send out another letter.
I I did not solicit this whatsoever. I
Well.
I I I've had, I've had no contact.
It's Sean Fagan's legal counsel. No one asked for this letter. We're going to get sued.
Okay.
They're accusing the county of obstruction.
Work with him on any cases that he wants, any case. Bring forth some cases and we will give you, I will personally make sure that we go through whatever he needs.
He's entitled to all of the emails. So, so I I I I have been presented here on behalf of the commission with the demand letter to turn these, to turn these records over. I I am, I am also presented here with it with, quote, the fact remains that you and your commissioners continue to be in noncompliance with Indiana law while jeopardizing criminal prosecutions in your county and the efficient flow and continuity of government. Uh uh again, if it's the pleasure of the board to deny this, that's fine, but we need to vote on this one way or another. I've been presented with this and if the boards are, if 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 the board as a whole is refusing to do it, the Indiana Attorney General's Office is asking me to do this. So there needs to be a vote up or down as to whether or not we're gonna do it or I'm gonna have to proceed under the guise that we are violating the law and we have to bring ourselves under compliance. So whatever you two want to vote today, whatever kind of motion you want to make, that's fine, but we have to vote on this up or down from this demand letter. We're in violation of law according to them and we have to respond to them. This thi- this isn't something we can just push off. I mean, un- unless we want to face, you know, obstruction of justice charges from the Attorney General's Office, I don't want that. Um I I, whatever you guys want to do, but I mean, we we need to vote up and down. Yeah.
Well, given that Commissioner Graham Rosa offered him what he wants, to come to the office and look at whatever he wants. She has made that offer. As far as I'm concerned, she is in, we are in compliance by that move. Uh also, information that I have learned very recently about this case, uh that I I'm not gonna discuss it in an open meeting at all. I will in executive session, but not in an open meeting. I I I will abstain from any further involvement in it.
I.
I will abstain as well.
Well, then your vote carries then, if you would like to vote, Mr. Haney.
Alright, in that, in that, in in that case, we would be really in compliance with the Office of the Indiana Attorney General's demand for release these emails and records.
And I want it stated here right now at this public meeting that this is forced upon me by the President Commission and by the attorney. Because the only one that's representing this, and I hope that someone comes forward and asks for these all these buildings because in no state, that podium is empty, empty. Mr. Fagan has made no attempt to come here and ask for anything in public. There has been private meetings in Tim Stables' office. We're gonna just have to, where wherever this goes, this goes.
It's, we're still in.
I will look for my own personal attorney on this because I have asked for an attorney. I was denied an attorney and this is now ridiculous.
I, just so we're clear.
As far as I'm.
I have never been.
I'm done with this meeting.
We're, we're still in session. You can make a motion to di- to 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 deny.
Want an attorney on this, please get one that tells you that this is acceptable.
You you can move to deny the request. There's, there's nothing stopping you from doing that. If you'd like to, please go ahead. I'm not stopping you.
He can do this solely by himself.
Well, I, if you're both abstaining.
You just said, because we abstained, that he can make this motion by himself.
He actua-
Go right ahead. Make the motion. Go ahead and.
I I I don't even need to make a motion on this. I. Please, Mr. Jones, sorry.
There's a couple of things that we need to clarify here. If you would like counsel specifically on this, in this regard, I would never obstruct that request. I would be happy to do anything you need in that regard to get you your own attorney for that.
Just a few minutes ago, you said he can make the decision by himself. Have him make that decision.
My integrity has been smirched and I'm going to respond to this. So I I have never obstructed anybody's right to get an attorney. I I don't, I'm not sure what's particularly funny about this. I I should also be clear, I've never represented Mr. Fagan. Mr. Fagan is, as you said correctly, a state office holder. He made a request of the county and I am the county attorney. Therefore, I have had to respond to his requests throughout this entire, I guess, request period since the beginning of January. I I should be really, really honest and clear here. I I don't particularly care one way or another about what Sean Fagan wants or doesn't want. The only thing I care about is that the county is in compliance with the law. That is the only thing I care about. So I I just, I I, there's a lot of things that I'm willing to do as the county attorney. I I won't have my actions mischaracterized by anyone. Um so I I need to make clear that I would never obstruct anybody's ability to get independent counsel in this regard. And if there's a single attorney in the world who says that what we are doing by den- if we were to deny this um is legal or the right thing to do, I would love to meet that lawyer and speak with them about this. I would have no issue with that whatsoever.
So I think what's on the table right now is he has given you permission to make the choice on your own.
I I think we have a question here. I think that's, that's a, that's a fair, fair point, Commissioner Graham Rosa. Um of whether there is a majority when there are two uh commission members who are actually abstaining. I think what would make more sense here, so we have a majority, would be if you two would vote, or at least one of you would vote to delegate the decision-making authority in this regard to President Haney. That way you're not actually expressing an opinion on this at all. You're simply voting to allow the commission president to make a decision in this regard.
That's not what you said earlier. Earlier you said that because we both abstained that he can make that decision on his own. So have him make that decision on his own. Now you want to go back and you want to reword it.
Well, I I think we have a question of quorum that I I'd either need time to research. I apologize for saying that, but I think we have a question regarding quorum. If two commissioners are abstaining, whether the single commission officer who is left has the right to make decisions unilaterally. So it to to cure that, the commission could vote to simply cede the the decision-making authority in this regard to Mr. Haney. The commission could vote on that. And.
I have a, a question. Through this whole thing, um why, why would you be meeting with the auditor to discuss this case?
It did not happen.
I've never met with.
That that has not happened.
Well then, why would you charge us there? I'm looking at the charges here from the attorney where you met with the auditor to discuss the Fagan case, knowing that you are his personal attorney. That little thing doesn't smell, it's no good to me.
Yeah, I I would have to see that charge and look back at whatever occurred that day.
I look at it because I circled it, that and a few other things on the charges, but that to me, uh I've come to know that the auditor over the last couple of years and I uh I questioned why he would want why he would have an answer in this case. Uh and if there was an attorney motive, I I don't know. But it it doesn't make sense to me. Uh and we're not gonna get anywhere chasing our tail on this. I just Commissioner Graham Rosa was right. This was left on the table, the last meeting. I'd say that unless you take it off the table, it stays there. And if that doesn't uh fit, then I would motion again to table it for further information.
The.
If it dies to a lack of.
I I, wha- wha- once again, I'm gonna use the words of the Attorney General's Office and say, quote, the fact remains that you and your commissioners continue to be in noncompliance with Indiana law while jeopardizing criminal prosecutions in your county. We, they are saying that we are breaking the law right now. Now, i- if you two don't agree with that, that's, that's fine. I believe the Attorney General's Office, the Indiana Association, the 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 access, public access counselor and the prosecuting attorneys uh uh counsel, that we are breaking the law by not turning this information over. If you two disagree with that, then you should have no problem denying, denying this demand letter. But we're, we're being told we're breaking the law here. So, you know, I I I've said this for 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 since taking office multiple times up here on this dais. I don't understand why the Board of Commissioners refuses multiple times over multiple years now to follow the law. I don't understand it. And that's fine. If if you don't agree with the assessment of the Indiana Attorney General's Office, that's fine. Then you should have no problem denying this because you're not gonna be in fear of facing criminal uh and getting criminal jeopardy.
Not denied him. He can have any email, bring a list, come before us. Let let us see either Fagan or his representation, rather than it be our representation and one commissioner fighting for this. Let's see Fagan and his legal representation up here. And this is something that we have offered him over and over and over and he has not taken us up on.
What the record shows, Commissioner Graham Rosa has offered to give him what he wants if he will in fact come forward and tell her what he wants.
So I'm not gonna get bullied by you two right now to make a choice or make a, make a vote. I'm not gonna get bullied up here because I have to either vote one way or another. I have offered him any emails that he needs and now I'm at the point where I physically feel bullied. Emotionally and physically, I am feeling bullied right now.
I I I am sorry you feel that way. Uh be- because of the inaction of this commission, I have received a letter on behalf of the commission telling me that I am breaking the law and obstructing justice. So how does that feel?
I would like to leave the meeting. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Attorney, if you would prepare a response to the Indiana Attorney General's Office and and uh include uh the salient points of our discussion here this afternoon.
I will.
Or this morning. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
And physically, thank you.
Alright, we have a motion to adjourn. Uh I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Stand adjourned.